Thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2020-09-049, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 2, addition of Section 2 hyphen 5 for electronic virtual public meetings. And I believe Carol wanted to say something before, or should it be presented first?
I'd rather go after the mayor. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary Alice. So this is a continuation of the discussion that was introduced a couple of weeks ago in committee. Based on city council comments and subsequent some subsequent conversations, I decided, or we decided that it would be simpler to just add a new section to city code rather than trying to amend the existing language that that applies to in-person meetings. So the new section 2.5 in the city code would specifically address public comment in remote meetings. We're going to be meeting in this format for the foreseeable future, especially as we go into the flu season, the cold weather months, the pandemic shows no sign of abating. And for the safety of our staff, our council members, our board and commission members, and members of the public will be meeting remotely. So it's important that we have clear rules specifically applying to remote meetings. And it's hoped that these rules will provide guidance for consistent procedures, give us adequate time to really discuss and deliberate and take action on agenda items, and promote a productive and productive virtual meeting environment. In general, the provisions included in this section is include the fact that the public body will accept both written comment, that's email or US mail, or verbal comments from the public on any topic. And with each meeting agenda, we'll have instructions clearly written on each meeting agenda so people know exactly what they need to do. If they want to send a letter, send an email, or make verbal comments. In surveying other cities around us, there's really a really wide range of how cities handle public comment in remote meetings, which kind of reflects how everyone's trying to find a way through this new meeting format. We do ask that people state their name for the meeting record. I'm recommending, I'm asking that person speak for no more than three minutes each, and that the public input portion of the meeting total no more than one hour. The meeting body, the public body would have the option of extending that time by a vote of two-thirds member of members present. Again, in surveying different cities in the region, there was a wide range in how long people allowed for public comment. It ranged from 20 minutes in one city to unlimited in others. Three to five minutes. Most, most cities focus on three minutes each. Few allowed for five minutes each. Many cities actually required people to register in advance if they wanted to speak at a meeting, either by sending an email into the city clerk's office, signing up, you know, the day of the meeting. And that sort of thing. So there's, there's a wide range. But what I'm recommending is no more than three minutes each and up to an hour per meeting. People can speak once during a meeting. And not split their time. The presiding officer would have the option, not required, but would have the option of giving priority to people who want to speak on an action item or an item that the council or committee or the board would be taking action on at that time. And to really help ensure that we have a productive and positive meeting environment, we are going to give the presiding officer the authority to give a verbal warning to any speaker who's using threatening, abusive, harassing, defamatory language, or engaging in disorderly conduct. And you see this language in many other cities' council rules as well. And it would, the presiding officer, that would either be the mayor, or the chair of the committee, or the whoever's chair in the board or commission meeting, would have the authority to mute the speaker's microphone if they don't cease the, the, that type of language. And the speaker could send the rest of their comments in by emails to the public body. Members of the public who are invited to present information on a particular topic would be limited to 10 minutes. I do want to clarify this. This doesn't apply to, like the presentation we had tonight was a another agency presenting on a specific topic that, such as the report on the Kickapoo rail trail. The language in this part of the code refers to occasionally a city council member or a chair of the committee, the whole wants to invite a member of the public to present on a specific topic. That would be limited to the 10 minutes per presentation. And then if you do want to schedule, and it's the presiding officer of the council meeting, or the presiding officer of the committee of the whole, who would have that ability to add a presentation to the agenda. But you really need to schedule it with either the city administrator who, who reviews the agenda for each meeting along with the committee chair, or the staff liaison to a board or commission. And that's mainly to make sure that there's time on the agenda to add that presentation. And you have to take, you know, you're planning your agenda for each meeting, you have to take that into context with all the other items on the agenda. So it has to be coordinated with whoever's, the presiding officer has to coordinate either with the city administrator or the staff liaison. And then we wanted to clarify language in this, the part of the code, just as in the other part of the code, about deferral, the ability to defer an item. City council agenda items, and this when we're meeting as the city council, can be deferred to the next regular city council meeting with a motion and a second by council members. And then there's no discussion on that item. And then after that, the city council can defer the item a second time with a three-fourths vote of the council to a special city council meeting that has to take place before the next regularly scheduled council meeting. If you're in a committee meeting, you can just keep an item in a committee meeting by vote, majority vote. You don't have to vote to defer. You can just keep it in committee since it's already there to begin with. So the deferral rule that, where you can defer with a vote, with a motion and a second applies to the city council meetings only. And then if we're conducting hearings, there are separate, specific rules for the hearings that that will be published separately. So I, I'm requesting that you improve these, these rules. And I really think they will help us clarify how our meetings will be conducted and will be predictable and consistent from here on out. And it's, it's taken a while to get here, but we, you know, we've been working our way through, through remote meetings and based on our experience and need to, to conduct our meetings and get stuff done during our meetings, I'm recommending that these changes be made. And I do want to let folks know that there will be opportunities for the public to speak, for us to listen, for us to have discussions. We'll be holding listening sessions with our community engagement coordinator, getting those set up, similar to the way the city of Champaign is holding listening sessions right now on, on public safety issues. So, so there are, there will be opportunities outside city council meetings where more robust conversations can be held. And before we move on, I know Carol wanted to add a few things too. Losing my voice. Apologize.
Carol?
Thank you. I'd like to speak in favor of imposing limits on the abusive language that has found its way into your council meetings. I spent time talking to staff members, some of whom have been targeted by the abuse, and others who have not, to get their perspectives. The significant negative impact of this language on our staff is of great concern to me. In previous conversations at council, some of you seemed reluctant to curtail any language presented by the public because of free speech concerns. The right to free speech is not unqualified or unconditional, as you know. But if you need a starting place, why not start with what we're teaching the children of our community? Section 720 of the school district's policy manual directly prohibits the harassments, the harassment of students stating that, quote, "The district will not tolerate harassing, intimidating conduct, or bullying that creates an intimidating, hostile, or offensive educational environment. And examples of prohibited conduct include name-calling." So can we start there? No name-calling? The school district's policy goes on to talk about threatening behavior, specifically physical threats. Well, thank goodness, I don't think any staff members have been threatened with physical harm. How about a threat to their livelihood? When members of the public make unfounded, sweeping accusations of wrongdoing, and lying, corruption, collusion are some of the words that have been used, that threatens people's livelihoods because, because it undermines staff members' personal and professional reputations. There are no specific allegations, no chance for the person accused to address the accusations. It's another form of verbal abuse, and it is toxic. And since accusations like these also have potential legal implications for staff and the city, it's also reckless. The city has a policy to promote a respectful, productive, professional, and diverse work environment. We don't tolerate behavior by employees that harasses, disrupts, or interferes with another employee's work performance, or creates an intimidating, offensive, or hostile work environment. Given that council meetings are part of our work environment, and council members are city officials, are you comfortable allowing members of the public to verbally abuse staff? Is that acceptable to you? Our staff members don't find it acceptable. I don't find it acceptable. To use some of their words, they find it offensive, demoralizing, embarrassing. Some people are actively looking for jobs elsewhere because of it. Others are questioning why they should work for a city where conditions like this exist and are allowed to persist. Every year when we present our budget, we remind you that our staff is our most important asset. Why aren't we shielding them from baseless accusations and insults? Over the span of my career in public service, I have easily attended several thousand public meetings of various types. I have never witnessed the toxicity that exists in your council meetings and in some of the board and commission meetings. It is your responsibility to make the public forum, yet at a council, or a board, or commission meeting, a safe space for everyone to air their views, and a safe space for staff to work. We don't expect everyone to agree. That isn't my point. The point is abusive language should not be tolerated in our public meetings, and you have the power to make that happen. I have been reading a book called Why We Are Polarized by Ezra Klein. In the introduction, he says this, quote, "Toxic systems compromise good individuals with ease. They do not do so by demanding we betray our values, but by enlisting our values such that we betray each other." That's the end of the quote. So as you debate how to curtail the abusive speech that has poisoned our public forums in Urbana, please don't betray our staff by excusing the bullies. To betray our staff is to betray ourselves, and ultimately our values. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Questions for the mayor? Sharice?
Okay, I just want to, I just want to be clear that the three minutes is a baseline. If, if we are having a meeting where there aren't a lot of people, and we have the choice through a three-fourths vote, right, to change it to five minutes before public input?
No, no. Three minutes is the, up to three minutes is allowed to speak and up to no more than one hour total public input, unless you vote by two-thirds vote to it.
That's what I meant.
So if there's, you know, if there's something that, you know, a very, very hot topic, one that requires a lot more comment, you, you have that option, but it's three minutes per person.
Okay.
Other questions for the mayor? Bill Brown?
Yeah, in section four, on the motion stuff, paragraph four, that second sentence, it's still on the remaining part, about deferring at a second time, I think we can delete that sentence. There's already Robert's Rules of Order motion to, I don't think they call it defer, continue to a time certain, is basically what that's doing. And that only requires a majority vote. So it seems redundant to have that second deferral rule. That was never in the original. The original had a three-quarter vote if you wanted to consider it prior to the, the meeting that it was deferred to. That's been taken out. I don't think it's ever been used. I don't see that we need that. But I think the, the replacement sentence there with the second deferral, I don't think we need that.
So you're saying the, the sentence that reads, "At the meeting to which the said agenda item was deferred and upon affirmative vote of three-fourths of those city council members present."
Yeah.
That's the one to get rid of?
Yeah. Because you can, we can already do that just through Robert's Rules by continuing it to a time certain, or postponing it to a time certain, I think it's called.
Okay. So section four would then consist of the first sentence, and then the last sentence, that any committee of the whole meeting, an item, actually, it should read an item can be kept in committee by a majority vote.
Okay.
Okay.
Is section three?
That was section four, paragraph four.
Okay.
All right. Other questions for the mayor? I have a question, Diane. I was wondering, well, first of all, thank you, because I know that I was the one who asked if we could do Zoom rules instead of changing the whole code. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you for suggesting that. That simplified it a lot.
So right now, we have most, most things require a majority vote in order to do something. Why does the two-thirds vote? Why is that required for extending it beyond an hour instead of a simple majority?
I just think, I just think you need to have a bigger percentage of the council wanting to do that. I think it's a more significant step to take.
How many does it take for us to add or change, amend the agenda currently? Is it, is it a majority or is it two-thirds?
To amend the agenda?
Yes, to change the agenda.
That's a majority.
That's a majority.
Yeah.
All right. Other questions for the mayor? All right. So this is something that is in.
I do have one more question.
Yes, Sharice.
I'm sorry. This particular also will go, go to commission meetings, go, it'll go toward commission meetings as well as board meetings, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead, Mary Alice.
I, I was just going to suggest to the committee that if the will of the committee is move this forward, my, I would suggest to do it with no recommendation, since we don't have Julie or Dennis here. But that's just my suggestion. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion of any kind.
Okay. Well, I'll move forward with it. I moved that ordinance number 2020-09-049, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 2, addition of section, addition of sec, section 2-5, electronic virtual, virtual public meetings, be moved to city council. And I'll go with you, Mary Alice, with no recommendation at this time until we have Dennis and Julie, we have the full council.
I'll second it.
All right. So moved by Sharice and seconded by Bill for this, to move forward to city council with no recommendation discussion. Jared?
I guess I'll just repeat some of my points from our previous discussion. I am glad to see that we're considering those separate from the rules as we had them, so that when the day comes that we go back to regular in-person meetings, if that happens before the next election, and we're all still on council, et cetera, then we'll reconsider the rules again at that time, so whether we got, at least we got that part of this. I still think, and have a number of problems with what's, what's being offered, two of which that I would appreciate other council input on, I guess, is just the, the three-minute limit. I know I'm, I'm an advocate for more input rather than less, so I would definitely prefer to keep rules at least similar to what we had before and allow, you know, as Mary Alice kind of alluded to, and she was asking earlier, that if we don't have a lot of people, if there's only three or four people, that we would be able to give them five minutes, I would still rather see that be the option rather than just three minutes across the board, no matter what, no matter how many people there are. And I also don't like the idea of just limiting, limiting it to one hour. I know we have to make some sort of reasonable compromise on that. I don't know that unlimited comment is the answer either in this format. I would go for that, but I know that that's probably not going to be the will of, of you guys in considering. I'm, I'm in unlimited, and we're suggesting one hour. Perhaps there's some sort of compromise in there we can all agree on. But I'll save the other ones, but I'd like to hear comments on at least those two things first, before we get into some of the other ones.
Bill Culberk?
Yeah, although, you know, I seconded the motion with no recommendation. I think these rules, as laid out, are completely reasonable, and I would be in support of them as written right now. Jared, to your point, you know, the three-minute limit, I mean, I can appreciate that. I've got to think back when, when I made my pitch to be on the council. That was a pretty important three minutes, and I think it was just three minutes. I didn't need five minutes. I took three minutes, and I got everything that I needed to say out in three minutes. And we've also had multiple examples of people who've actually used the words, "You, you, council, waste my time, so I'm going to waste your time." And so they've got everything critical that they need to say out in three minutes, but they openly say, "I'm going to continue talking just to waste your time." And then as far as like the one hour, you know, we, we've had public comment, you know, reached to two hours, beyond two hours. And I'll repeat the same issue that I've brought up in past council meetings. We have been taking critical votes that affect the citizens of the city, five minutes till 11 o'clock, and we're all exhausted. And I think the one-hour limit for public comment is appropriate.
All right. Other comments to Jared's question? Jared?
I didn't see anybody else raise their hand, but I, Bill, one other thing to consider that somebody gave, and maybe that's language that we can at least add, is that it's not always the easiest thing for everyone to succinctly say what they need to say in three minutes. So even if we didn't, you know, necessarily make it what the rules were before between three and five, and base it on, on numbers, at least we could possibly include language that if somebody makes a specific request, I know we have to do this anyway because of ADA rules. I'm not sure where the line lies in there, but at least acknowledging, you know, that if somebody, you know, I know Sarah Nixon, in particular, who comments at almost every meeting, she, it's very difficult for her to try and get done what she needs to say in three minutes. And I know that there are probably other folks who probably feel the same way and are just, you know, public speaking isn't easy for everyone. And, you know, it's easy for us. We practice at it. You would, you, you've had a very professional, very public career. And I've been fortunate enough to be in the situations that I'm in, that I'm comfortable speaking in public, and I can say what I need to say in a succinct amount of time, but a lot of people can't. And I think that's a big consideration that we would overlook by just saying, well, it's just three minutes, and that's it, no matter what. So maybe a compromise could be that, at least if somebody gives us a acknowledgement ahead of time, or at the time of their comment, that, you know, three minutes is going to be really hard for me to make. I'd really like to extend that. We allow them to do that and just don't blanket it. That's my, I guess it's the only other consideration I meant to mention in considering that time limit.
I'm, I'm not going to move the chair because I did have a question about that. I know in the past, when we've had people who have, I'm thinking specifically of Dural, who's, who's brought a lot of information to council, and we've asked for his time to be extended. Is that, was that proper procedure? If somebody needs more time to get through something that they've done, what would be the procedure given these rules? I don't know who that goes to. It goes to Jim, maybe?
Well, I'll answer it. I think the language in the proposed ordinance covers exactly what is being suggested. It says that the three minutes, so I'm told, no more than three minutes, and no more than one hour, unless shortened or extended by two-thirds vote of the public. How do you determine whether somebody really needs an extra five minutes? Or whether somebody tells you they want the five minutes, or guising it as they need it, just so they can continue an extra two minutes? I think the two-thirds helps tend to sift some of that out intuitively. I mean, you're not going to have medical exams or anything like that. We're getting, you know, that's really getting bizarre. But you do have the option on a case-by-case basis, or a meeting-by-meeting basis. The problem with the five-minute, after 20 people raise their hands, because some people get three minutes after that, while the first 20 in the current, would be proposed for in-person, get five minutes. Is that not discriminatory? That some get five and others get three, just on an arbitrary cutoff of 20? So I think the mayor's proposal here, that everyone get three minutes serves two purposes. Everyone gets the same amount of time, and more people get to speak. If you find out four, or five, or six, or seven people, I don't remember how many people, because I wasn't being tracked, raised their hand and spoke this time, they got five minutes. If it's not such a packed agenda, and the hands go up, and it's not 20 or 30 people, or 15 people, you can extend it if the council wants to to five minutes.
Actually, no, Jim. The way it's written and the way it's intended is that each person gets an up to no more than three minutes, but the total amount of time devoted to public input could be shortened or extended.
Well, see, I see, public comment shall be limited to no more than three minutes.
Per person.
No, I see that, per person. And the public input portion of the meeting shall total no more than one hour, comma.
Correct.
Shortened or extended by two-thirds vote of the public body members present. So I, the two-thirds, unless it's intended some other way.
It's intended for three minutes per person, but the amount of time devoted to public input could be extended depending on what's being discussed at the meeting.
But in either event, regardless of how, you know, regardless, everyone gets the same amount of time, and you get the opportunity within the one hour for more input. You don't have to cut it off at one hour. If, if there's enough time in one hour, more people get to speak in one hour than five minutes.
All right. So what I'm hearing is that the mayor's intent of the ordinance is that people are maximum given three minutes, and there's no type of vote that could be taken to give somebody more than three minutes. That's the intent of it.
Correct.
Okay. And if, if we wanted to have the option of giving somebody more than three minutes, how would that be written, Jim?
It'd have to be expressly, expressly provided. It'd have to be expressly provided, but following on the mayor's intent here, how do you determine whether somebody, one person should get five minutes, or three minutes and somebody else gets more? I mean, the First Amendment doesn't guarantee somebody the right to speak longer than somebody else. We don't know, I, I'm not aware of a case, there may be out there, I'm not saying there aren't, I haven't done an exhaustive research that the ADA talks in terms of some people being able to organize and speak their thoughts publicly in three minutes where others are not able to easily do that. And I, I, I don't know how you can make those kinds of determinations and all without saying, one person says, "I want to speak five minutes," sure, council wants to allow that. Another person says, "Well, I want to speak five minutes too, I have the same problem," and the council says, "Well, I don't think so." How do you deal with that? Is that not discriminatory? And I'm not talking about racial discrimination or religion or ethnicity or any of that. But it's putting a value judgment on one person's speech over another person's speech. I think actually the mayor's interpretation is probably, is a better interpretation than my own.
Bill Culber.
Jim, thank you for that. I mean, I actually agree with, with that opinion. And it keeps us as a council, I think, out of a lot of civil liability problems if we are consistent across the board. Because as soon as we start making judgment decisions, you know, based on some arbitrary amount, all we're going to do is get ourselves in trouble. So I think, you know, a standard time per person is the proper way to go.
And I, and I would add if there's, if there's, again, a topic that a lot of people want to comment on, you can extend the amount of, total amount of time allowed for comment and give people the opportunity to speak.
Can I correct one thing that was said in public comment this evening about this?
Yes.
The comment was made that the section, the Open Meetings Act, section 2.06 per N G that provides for public comment does not allow for rules that control essentially the tenor or the tone of speech. By the same token, nothing in that section, and it's a very scanty section, very skimpy section, says you can't. However, there are two PAC opinions that cite the same case, same federal case out of the Northern District of Illinois that says the tone of speech and the manner, or I should say, the tone of speech and the, the nature of that kind of delivery is not content-based. So a regulation and, and then I have three or so cases that back that up, that the PAC allows for time, length, and manner restrictions. Time restriction, three minutes. Time restriction, one hour. Perfectly legal until the PAC interprets it differently, but right now, absent a PAC opinion and there probably will be a, a request for review or a complaint, and that's fine. Would allow for those two restrictions. In terms of the tenor of speech, that is manner. You can apply manner regulation as long as it's not discriminatory. It is not contrary to what some alluded to this evening and in past council meetings. That is not content regulation and I can cite three or four cases and two PAC opinions on that if people really are interested. In fact, I think I provided much of this to you all anyway, in a legal opinion, which is subject to.
All right. Jared, I'm sorry, you had your hand up earlier. Did you want to speak? If you do.
Yeah, um, so, I guess, well, then what's our, why do we even have the language, persons with disabilities needing special services or accommodations for this meeting should contact the City of Urbana's American Disabilities Coordinator at 3842466 in very, very tiny print at the bottom of our input section. I mean, are we not going to make, you know, are we, are we just going to say, "Sorry, y'all, three minutes is what it is, don't care what your needs are?"
It, it, if that's what it says, then somebody who needs an accommodation should follow the directive in the agenda by contacting that person. But just coming into a meeting and saying, "Gee, I, I, I need an accommodation because I can't say what I want to say in three minutes." How do you judge that? How do you know whether that person needs an accommodation?
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting that we do it on the fly, Jim. I was suggesting that they would have to ask beforehand, that they would request beforehand.
And the agenda provides for that accommodation. Now, if you want to put that in the ordinance itself, a legitimate accommodation, but who's gonna, who's going to assess the legitimacy of an accommodation? I want to speak on eight points and each point's going to take a minute. And I'm giving you hypotheticals to, you know, to highlight the slippery slope that you're talking about. I have eight points, I practiced my speech, they are very concisely stated, but I want to state them all tonight, in this meeting, tonight. So I want eight minutes.
I think that language, Jared, I know the language referred to in-person meetings and probably more of a physical accommodation than public input accommodation, but, but we could put specific directions in the, in, in the directions for public input that if a person wanted to have a special accommodation, they should contact the clerk's office in advance to let us know. And that would be similar to what other cities do when they require people to actually sign up to speak, you know, anybody sign up to speak. But we could have advanced notice for that, put that in our meeting input rules.
And, and that's all I'm asking for is, you know, that we let people know that people who have a legitimate reason to need more time, that we'd be willing to accommodate that. That's, that's all I'm asking for here.
We can do that with advanced arrangements with the clerk's office.
Okay, well, maybe for, we'll work on language for that for, when we see it at council, presuming it passes the vote now.
All right, Bill Culber.
Would that be mayor with the clerk's office or would that still be through the ADA coordinator for the city? Because to Jim's point, if, if somebody's claiming a, you know, some sort of disability and they need, you know, legal accommodation, shouldn't that be vetted through the, the disability coordinator? I mean, the disability may not be in movement, but it may be in speech or thought.
Okay, we can do it through them. And, but either way, I think it needs to be made, arrangements need to be made in advance.
And, and in a formal fashion.
Yes.
Jared, did you want to say something?
Uh, I mean, you know, we're, we're just having a discussion about this. But Bill, Sharice, and Mary Alice, I haven't heard your guys' opinion on the hour or the three minutes versus five and limiting versus lots of people versus short people, so I'd love to hear what you guys are thinking.
Well, personally, I just feel that I'm right there with Carol regarding, I, I think there definitely needs to be rules regarding this based on the fact that, you know, I've dealt with people saying untrue stuff about me during, during the meetings. And I'm, you know, I hear it and I don't speak to it. But it's, uh, I'm, I'm not here for you to berate me and abuse me verbally. I'm here to listen to what your complaint can be and hopefully there's something I can do to help. Can't always do that and I'm not always going to have the opinion of, of other people that are speaking. And I'm kind of right there with Bill. We were given, when I had to approach to the, the city council regarding filling this space, I, I was on a time limit as well. And it was pretty important to me doing this and somehow I was capable of doing it and did it on the fly. So I think that when, we're not taking away, away anybody's right to speak. We are limiting it based on past experiences, yes, and I don't have a problem with the hour because I do have, have other commitments that I, that I do after I get out of a meeting. And there are time, there are time-specific type of things that I have to do. And sometimes that's why you don't see me on video, because there are timed things that I have to do. And if, if the earlier that I'm, I'm able, we're able to get our city business done, the, the, the other commitment that I have to take care of is also taken care of on time. And I, I do think that it's important that there be rules that are followed and that are put in, in place so that there's no question. And this is probably one of the best things that we could do to do that and still have public input.
All right, well, you called on me specifically, Jared, so I'm going to have to pass the chair back to Sharice so I can have part of the discussion.
I take the chair from you.
Thank you. I, you know, I was one of the people that talked a bit about maybe changing the number of, of people that would be here before it switched from five to three minutes. I noticed today that we had eight people raise their hands and we had four people as we were going. So certainly throughout the, the meeting, more people want to address city council. I'm, I'm really on the fence. I, I would like to provide people with more time, but I also understand the idea that we need to be as consistent as possible, so, so there's that. In terms of the one hour, I, the way I'm approaching one hour is we look at our agenda, we're guaranteed an hour of public input. If we have more time, I'm not opposed to asking for more time, but I think it's a good guidepost for now. It's about, it's about 30% of the meeting, of the scheduled time meeting. So that gives us two-thirds, one-third basically to get our work done. And also hear public input at the same time, so that's just kind of where I'm coming from. But I, I'll take my chair back because I'm done with my answer to Jared, if that's okay, Sharice.
Okey-dokey, you got it back.
All right, thank you. Bill Brown?
Yeah, I think the, this is a reasonable approach. I think from the public input rules I've looked at in other studies, an hour is still on the higher end of, some of them are less, some of them are half hour. I saw one that's even 20 minutes. Two hours, I, I didn't see anything that was two hours except Urbana. Three minutes. You know, I think there have been times where, you know, I wanted to listen to somebody more than three minutes, but Jim and Bill made good points that if you start doing it for one person, then you have to have some criteria to do it for other people and that's, you know, that's not easy to do. I don't even know if a two-thirds vote would, would be the way to do that. So, you know, the manner of speech, I think will be interesting. I, you know, I think there have been some borderline cases where I'm not sure exactly, you know, what would happen. I think you can warn people and hopefully people will be reasonable about it, but there's no guarantee of that. But yeah, like tonight, I counted 14 at the end that we had and I think there were eight or nine that raised their hand at the beginning. So I think three minutes is really the only way to do it in this, in this format. So I'm fine with, with the way it is, thanks.
Sharice, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I know since we've even been discussing this, what I have noticed during public input is people being more civil, which is the only thing I asked for from the beginning of, of all this. I have noticed a change and so it's not impossible for it to happen. And it's not impossible for, for there to be civil discourse without, you know, tone and people can, can state their, can state what, what they feel without there being, you know, an attitude given. And, and I don't, you know, it's not, and it's not that I don't, I mean, folks are going to have their attitudes, of course, but it's just that when it, when it gets to a point where it's abusive and defamatory, that does, that is an issue that I, I don't, I'm not particular about.
Bill Culber.
Sharice, I agree with you. I, I've noticed as well, and I've actually talked to, to some constituents here in Ward Six about this very issue, that it appears to me that since the council has been actively talking about public input, how we do it, how it's supposed to be, how it's supposed to take place, the, it's become a little more civil. The tenor and tone has gotten better, so I agree with you that, that it proves that it can be done. So I appreciate your comment.
Jared, did you want to say something?
Yeah, um, I mean, it sounds like everybody's pretty okay with it and I'll probably be alone yet again in my opinions on, on this, but I just want to share my thoughts with you guys because that's what we're supposed to do in committee of the whole. And just bring up a couple more points. I am concerned, I mean, I get what everybody's saying about, you know, not wanting people to be rude when they're giving public comments. And that can be hard to hear from people, you know, especially when it happens repeatedly and I, and I understand that. But, you know, I think that's, in my personal opinion, that's part of, you know, what you accept when you agree to become an elected official, that people are probably not going to like some of the things that you choose to do and you just better have thick enough skin to deal with that because, you know, people just aren't going to and that's, it comes with the territory. And Sharice, I mean, in absolutely no, no offense to you, I, I totally understand your, your situation that you have being a caretaker and I've recently taken on a similar role for someone that I, that I care about very much. And it's kind of got in the way of my ability to perform my job at the last meeting, but I was still able to be there for a chunk of it and I felt like I at least was able to contribute somewhat. But, you know, I had to personally make a strong consideration recently because of that, you know, every time something happens in my life, I, I'm always weighing, you know, is this, is council the right place for me and said, you know, can I be effective here with somebody who was in a different situation than me? Be able to be more effective and be able to do what I need to do and some, you know, I know it's hard that we go, that the meetings go late and that, you know, if public comment is long, that's a reason that they go late. But, you know, again, with, you know, same thing with language, you know, I feel like it's just, it's the nature of the beast, the way it is right now. And you, you were at the in-person meetings before it came, before we were here and they were often pretty short. You know, sometimes we were only there 15, 20 minutes and then they're, and then they were over. It hasn't always been like this and it may not continue to be that way, but for right now, you know, it is, so, you know, I'm just saying that so, you know, that I, I consider that very strongly and where every, every time something happens in my life that, you know, I consider what this role is and if I'm able to properly do what I need to do on council, but I'll, I'll wait for my other comments because I know you probably want to respond.
Sharice.
Jared, I, I don't disagree with you on, on some of the things that you said, but I don't think anybody, I don't care what your position is. And Lord knows, I've been on the giving end sometimes when I'm angry. And it would be different if I could come back and, and respond. And it would be different if I could come back and, and respond to some of the things that have been said, but I can't. And I don't think anyone sets themselves up as a public servant to be verbally abused. And it's not about whether, how thick my skin is. Trust me, it's about how, how much I want to sew my mouth up to keep me from saying something. More than anything, no one has to, you know, I don't, I don't, would not talk to a public person. I would not talk to, and I have not talked. When I've talked to people in person, I don't go off on them. And I don't, you know, but I am going to let them know how I feel. I am going to voice my opinion. I'm going to voice what I, how I see something as well. And I try to do it as, uh, as, uh, respectively as I possibly can, unless, unless I get, you know, I feel like I'm being abused on some level. So it's, it's not quite, and, and, and not only that, but, you know, several people attack folks that do the work of the city every day. And there's no cause for that. And that's, um, it's not fair for the folks that, that show up, they're working from home, that, that come to, come into work and put in sometimes twelve-hour days, uh, to try to get the work of the city done. And it does not help morale. It does not make people want to, uh, really, and it's not just about me. It's also about people that work in the city building itself. So, you know, I don't, I don't, I have to agree with Carol on that is that, you know, we are doing everything that we possibly can as a council and, and as a staff, as, and I know the staff is working because I've worked with some of them. And I think that it's one of those things that we have done, everything that we possibly can, when, when we hear what the input is from the public. And I'm sorry, the city of Urbana is not Hogwarts. We cannot just wave a wand and everything gets done when you say you want it done right away. It takes time and it takes even more time now. So that's all I have to say.
Bill Colbrook?
I just wanted to respond to, um, to Jared on, on your comment about, um, you know, we, we sign up for this, you know, we should, we could, um, you know, so I, I don't know your exact term, but, you know, whether we expect it or, you know, we just kind of have to endure, uh, that, that sort of, uh, treatment. And I, I'm in a unique profession where I've done this for thirty-five years. I've been a public servant. I've had said, I've had things said to me, to me about me, um, which, you know, none of what has happened here in city council even approaches, uh, what I've heard my, in my career. To me, it's not about having thick enough skin. Uh, we are setting rules, um, that not only affect the city council, us, but also, uh, the, the boards and commissions for the city. You know, I, I've been given specific training throughout my career. I've been, I've gone to repeated training throughout my career to be able to deal with, um, you know, citizens who are upset. The upset situation, upset as me as a public official, upset against the, the government action that's happening to them, for them, against them. And, and I'm used to that, but we've had, uh, multiple emails to our, uh, city council, uh, email of people that, um, are considering getting off commissions. Uh, they, they recited the fact that other people have got off commissions, uh, because of, um, some of the, the way they, you know, they've been treated, you know, on those commissions. Uh, we volunteered for this, uh, you know, we signed up, you, you know, one thing that I've, I've heard throughout my career, you buy the ticket, you take the ride. And, and, and I get that. You know, sometimes for me it made, you know, it meant, um, you know, working midnight, sometimes it meant, uh, working a blizzard, sometimes it meant a lot of things. But we have citizens in our community that stepped up and want to serve the other citizens of the community, and they want to do it in a, a kind and respectful way without, um, without being, uh, you know, humiliated or, or talked down to or insulted. And I think the rules that we're setting not only, you know, is for us, but for, for, um, you know, through, uh, you know, throughout the city of Urbana.
Diane? You're muted.
Thanks. Um, just to emphasize that last point, there are about twenty-six or twenty-seven different boards and commissions, about a hundred sixty-five seats that I have to keep filled with appointments. And some of these boards and commissions have been, a, a couple in particular, and one in particular has just been subjected to repeated bullying and harassing and cruel, really attacks, meeting after meeting, to the point where I'm, we're short three board members, three commission members. We had a city staff member, I think, who retired early because of it. The impact of this, uh, toxic regular, um, beating up on commission members is taking a toll. Uh, I'm, I, we're short three, two, um, civilian police review board members. I have, um, one applicant. We're short three human relation commissions members, and we're on, on the verge of losing more. These are important commissions with important work to do, and people are watching the meetings and, and these are volunteers. They don't get paid a dime, except in our thanks to them. And we have to change the tenor of these meetings. So being able to have some rules of engagement, rules for civility, rules for time, which is respectful of the board members, which is respectful of the public, and is respectful of the work that people have to do. So that's what these rules are for. And, and I can't emphasize enough how, um, devastating the impact of these, these, this tenor of these meetings have been the last few months on our volunteers, on our city staff and city employees.
Jared, did you want to add something?
Yeah, uh, I just want to continue the conversation. Um, so I guess, uh, you know, seeing, seeing as, again, I, I'm, I'm going to be alone in, uh, opposing these changes, uh, but I would at least respectfully request that if we're going to adopt this language, um, that we need to be clear about what it is that we understand abusive, harassing, threatening language, uh, to be. I'm not still quite sure about including the defamatory part because that implies someone has, you know, committed a crime and the, uh, resolution of that is a civil matter, not a matter to be decided by us, uh, at the time. I think that's a little odd that we're including that and that when we get to decide when something is defamatory and then shut it down because that's usually something that's settled in court. But at, at least as far as the abusive harassing and threatening part, when we talk about tone and tenor, you know, we need to be clear because that's, as it's written to me, it sure just seems arbitrary and all of us are going to have different ways of engaging with that. There isn't going to be a clear way for all of us to decide, you know, what one of those things is abusive, the other one might not. And, you know, it's just unclear. So if we're going to include this language, we, we need to be clear about what these things are. Not only for ourselves as the moderators of the meeting, but also for the public so that they understand exactly what it is that we're saying you can and can't say at city council meetings. Uh, that, that would be my, my one request, uh, for that. Um, but, and then, I mean, I guess, I don't like the change, the, the only other thing that I would even, since I'm, I'm, I'm not getting anywhere with any of this, uh, the only other thing that I would ask is that we would change that two-thirds back to just a, a simple majority. I, I don't know why we need two-thirds to extend it. I think a majority, if a majority feel like it's there, I mean, I feel like that's going to even be hard to get the way that you guys are approaching this. So, you know, what's the harm in that? Because if the only person asking for it is me, then nobody's gonna, nobody's gonna support it, but.
You don't know that.
It's, I, okay, fine. I don't know that. That's, I shouldn't be presumptive, but I would lo, I would like to see that it was just a majority would be that. And I don't, I don't know that we need to include those definitions in the code, but in the very least in the instructions, uh, about what those things are and how we expect tone and tenor to be in a meeting that, you know, we've just got to be clear because otherwise we're all gonna arbitrarily apply it. And if we're all arbitrarily applying it, then someone can sue us for discrimination because we're not doing it evenly across the board to all people for all things that they're saying. And I think that that's going to be really hard for us to enforce anyway, but I've already made that point, and you guys all seem comfortable with doing it. So that's what we're doing, and that's what we're doing. Uh, but those are the last two things that I at least like to be clear about, that language and how that works. And I would like to see extensions be made by majority, not two-thirds.
Charisse, can you take the chair for me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Um, Jared, that was going to be my suggestion as well, is to change it to a simple majority, just to be consistent with, we change agendas anyway. So I agree with you on that. I was gonna make that recommendation. The other thing that I, I just wanted to say, and I know we moved on a little bit, um, but Carol, what, what Carol was talking about was kind of the toxic environment that we have for our staff. And you're right, we signed up, Jared, for, um, being elected officials and we answer to the people. Uh, the staff are here. I mean, we have, we have the chief of police here right now. We have Stephanie McKenna here right now. They're mandated as part of their jobs to be here, and, um, it, it does trouble me because I think of this as their workspace. And if I had somebody come into my workspace and start accusing people who work for me in a loud forum, I wouldn't allow it. I, I mean, I, I just wouldn't allow it in my workspace. I would ask them to come and speak to me personally and to resolve it that way. Now, I, I don't know exactly, um, how to balance those two things. But I, I do recognize that the city of Urbana employs people, and we do have to have a good environment for them to work in. So that's one of the things that I'm struggling with, but I do support your idea of changing it back to a simple majority. Okay, Charisse, I've said my piece. She's muted, so she still has the chair.
I tried to unmute it. Sorry, I was doing it with the spacebar anyway. You got it back.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment? Jared?
I, I just want to point a order that, uh, do we have, what was the original motion? Did we, it was moved with a recommendation? I can't remember now.
It was moved with no recommendation.
With no recommendation, okay.
Yes.
Um, do, Diane, do you feel like we should offer, since Mary Alice and I supported an amendment to it, uh, or, uh, for the two-thirds thing? And vote on that separately? Like offer an amendment to the original motion to change that specific language?
Yes, yeah, you can do that.
Okay, well, then I will, uh, make the motion to, uh, change in section two, uh, paragraph B, one, C, that public comment, uh, shall be limited to no more than three minutes per person and blah, 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 et cetera, uh, no more than one hour unless otherwise extended by, cross out two-thirds vote and, uh, replace that with a majority vote of the public body members' presence.
As chair, I'm not sure I can second.
I think you can ask Charisse to take the chair and then.
A second.
Okay, uh, motion by Jared, seconded by Charisse, discussion.
Want to add that other amendment by Bill while you, while you're at it? Eliminating that sentence in, um,
Oh, yes.
Two dash twenty-seven, four.
What was the, yeah, I will add that, if you know what it, if you know what it is, or Bill, do you want to restate it? Okay. So I would add, add that language too. So that's two changes in that, uh, in that motion, if the seconders is, is still with that.
Charisse, are you okay with that?
Yep, I'm okay with it.
All right, any discussion on the amendments, the amendment to it? No, uh, Bill Colbrook?
Yeah, I, um, I, I don't agree with that. I, I think it takes a higher bar, uh, to, uh, to increase the, uh, the time limit because that's, that's one of the major things that we're talking about. Is, you know, how our meetings have, have gone into eleven o'clock, even when we start them at six, six fifteen, six thirty, they're always reaching eleven o'clock. So I think, um, that higher threshold is important. Uh, so I'm not in favor of that. Just wanted to put that out there.
All right, any other discussion? All right, so we're voting on the amendment which would change, um, change the extended time limit of public input, uh, either shortened or, um, extended beyond an hour. And also the pair, the sentence in section four, paragraph four, um, to remove the deferral from committee of the whole. Those are the two items that are up for vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
No.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
All right, that amendment passes. Uh, now back to the original motion for this to go to city council with no recommendation. Is there any further discussion? All right, well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Nope.
All right, that moves forward.